I think we can safely start. This is a meeting, Oakham Town Council's Planning and Parks Committee. It's 7pm, Wednesday, November 25th, 2015. Welcome to the councillors, welcome to the members of the public. Item one, the apologies. Receive apologies to absence, I think we've only got John Kennedy.
Yeah.
We've got a longstanding prior arrangement, so proposal to accept John's absence. Michael Elliott, seconded by Vince, all those in favour? That's unanimous then, thank you. Anybody else, is there? declarations of interest, members are asked to declare if required any disposable pecuniary interest they may have in respect to items of the agenda and any other interests. Are there any interests tonight that Vins know? Brilliant, okay. And obviously just remind all members to inform the clerks of any changes in your register of members' interest. Item three is to confirm the minutes of the meeting of the Planning and Parks Committee held on Wednesday, September 23rd, 2015. Anybody got any comments or observations? Can we have a proposal to accept them, by Stan, seconded by Joyce, all those in favour? He was abstaining. Everyone's in at the minute, and I think Jasmine is going to abstain.
Jasmine and Alf.
Yeah, so everyone else is in favour, and just Jasmine and Alf abstaining? Okay, members' reports, any reports from any of the members? No, there's no, oh, no, there was no councillors' questions.
That could have been made meeting.
Yeah, I'd already crossed it through. So, any, no, anyway, there's no questions at that point. Members' reports, anybody, any members got any reports? No? Wow. Shall we quit now, or we're ahead? The only thing I'd like to add here is that the anticipated light, erecting the lights on the High Street has started today. It wasn't actually on Monday, there was a delay because of a family bereavement within the teens, but they have started today, I've actually been on site with them at 3.30, 4 o'clock this afternoon, and we've done a walk of the town, and then we'll see what happens, okay? That's it really. Thank you. Is there anything from the clerks' report?
No, he's not giving me anything.
Obviously the clerk's not here this evening because it's Planning and Parks and Alison Clarks looks after that. Right, declarations by the public, item seven, members of the public are invited. Right, okay, members of the public are invited, so good luck to the public, so obviously Mr Beech, you made it aware, you would like us to speak.
Somebody wants to go, oh, last year, so.
Okay, yeah, you're obviously aware that you've got three minutes, but I think you know that anyway. But please, Mr Peter Carron.
Could you clap on, Mr Carron?
I've clapped it, look, I've got it going here.
It's 519 words.
Oh, right, okay, cool.
Right, okay, first of all, I've read the report, this is to do with, I'm not sure what item number it is, to do with the hotel on the bike class, not the one here in town, no issues with that one at all.
Okay.
And I've read the report, as I'm sure all of you have done here also, by Hogspree, and it is all centred on a national experience, and that's what I want to try and put across. That's as far as all the numbers are concerned, and all the data that they have put down, and it's applied particularly to large cities and much larger populated areas. All statistics provided are based on national trends, when ours in Oakham, there's no relation to those trends at all. Rutland has a limited offering, when you look at the attractions available nationwide. It mentions the Olympics and the Rugby World Cup as attractions that will promote accommodation in hotels, but can anybody give me any attractions here, or anything that's accommodation in particular, that's benefit from the Olympics and from the Rugby World Cup? Didn't think so. So the question is, is a hotel outside of the town centre a sustainable option? If you look at the current listing of accommodation in Rutland, I believe you'll find that they have difficulty filling their rooms on a regular basis, and we speak from experience. And besides, the list that is, the list that is shown in the report, I think you'll find the majority on there are well established, and there are a few B&amp;Bs, but even the fact that there are B&amp;Bs here locally in the town that are not registered, that don't pass any criteria, that not up to standards for us, standards are concerned, we've been running a B&amp;B here in Oakham for 16 years, and we've been a four diamond registered bed breakfast all of that time. Okay? And our experience as a registered four star member of the AA, it means that we get inspected every year, we get, not interrogated every year, but we certainly get asked certain paternal or questions that we are relevant. The proposed hotel will come at a time when there is already an application before you tonight for one in the town, which I would certainly go for. I think there's a lot more work to be done on the proposal, on the application. My conclusion, particularly from a gentleman called Mr Wayne, sorry, Mr Wayne Healy, who I don't know, has put in some remarks about the hotel being only 30 feet from his front door, and I can imagine that he's going to be particularly concerned about that. Accommodation in Oakham, in Rutland, or staffing anyway, staffing in accommodation has increased, but the amount of tourist numbers has been reduced by about half a million between 2007 and 2013. That's in the report.
Okay.
Not our figures, those figures. So, finally, can I just say that if your intention is to do anything, I think you ought to defer this decision, you need a lot more information, it's old information, it's information that's been on the books since 2007, not current.
Okay, brilliant, thank you. And then, yeah, hello, good evening, Mr Romney.
Romney, that's right, yeah.
Item 10, the column in the poll. And you're talking on the?
Column in Royce Park.
Yeah, item 10, poll, okay.
As the column fittings on Royce Green are still in place, I felt I had to address the council again on this matter, for forgive me if you already know what I'm about to say. A petition was handed into RCC by local residents, it was completed in a hurry, it has to be saved. We were going on holiday for two weeks and really wanted to show what the local feeling was. We didn't knock on doors, we completed the petition as and when we saw people, hence not many households are listed. At the public meeting, we were told by Mr Crouch that the petition was waited, as some of the names did not live in adjacent roads to Royce Green, albeit these individuals used the park every day on a regular basis. So RCC disregarded the full number, and those people's opinions were ignored. Taking out those numbers, we calculate that there are still leaves, 20 people who said that the column at CCTV was either unnecessary or in the wrong place. I have handed around a copy of the petition.
Thank you, go on.
At the public meeting, Mr Crouch, Mr Crouch held RCC, after some questioning, Mr Crouch said he was going to have a meeting the very next day at the park to see what other locations within the grounds would be an alternative location for the poll. In fact, that took place two weeks, almost two weeks later, and no mention of the finding from that was in the letter that I understand they sent to you, although I know it took place. The knock on the door exercise that was done by RCC was on 5th of November, on Friday night, which included some properties on Cold Overton Road, but none on Lonsdale, which also backs onto the field. To our knowledge, Cold Overton Road had not been contacted before, so why especially when they fail to inform or contact all of Westfield Avenue residents, some of which have never been contacted, even though they have the column clearly in sight from their properties? Again, it seems the chosen few were picked, why? One lady on Cold Overton Road corner couldn't speak at the time, her dog was in discomfort over the fireworks, but dearly wanted to state her disapproval and asked them to come back, which they didn't. The question asked at the door by RCC was, question, how do you feel about CCT coverage on the park? Understandably, most people before it, as indeed we are, if it is in the correct place. If the question had been, would you like a column CCTV camera to be relocated to allow face recognition in problem areas, I'm sure we would get 100% of people saying yes, which goes to prove figures can be manipulated as easily given a leading question. I myself am not against CCTV, as long as its location is justifying the cost and is fit for purpose, which this is not. Since the poll has been there, the play equipment has been attacked and vandalised twice, even if the camera was working, it is too far away from the problem area to recognise the perpetrators.
We're at a four minute point, so if you can?
Oh, I've got to say, Mr Jen, just basically, in sum up, Mr Jen, although they've done their survey, this is still not fit for purpose, it's in the wrong place, you're not going to get the benefit that it's needed for, and we would still ask you to refuse and ask it to be relocated. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Matt, thank you. You're just four minutes. Well, it's difficult, I appreciate it's always difficult to over points where the public are so passionate about it as well, and I also very appreciate the time that you've taken out. I'm not planning on moving the agenda items around because the CCTV poll comes up in three agenda items, so I'm not going to move anything at the moment. Does anybody else have anything to say to the public, or not? No? Well, what we're going to do is, we're going to take with the agenda, we're going to go to item eight, which is a request to use cuts close. This is to consider a request from the Cotis More Hunt to use cuts close on Boxing Day's meat, to decide whether to approve the request. I'll open the comments on this briefly, that it is a meat, it's not a hunt, I know the hunters are eating there, but they're meat, fox hunting is now being banned, so it's not about fox hunting, this is about a tradition that Cotis More Hunters do, let's focus on that as an agenda item. And it's not, it might be of interest to know that the next year is definitively 300 year anniversary for Cotis More's Association of the County, and they have been meeting in cuts close for many years, and I've got a photograph in this book here, which shows that they did it 100 years ago, I've done my research, so it's not, it's not a win, okay? Open this up the table, and we can either move round, or wait for Vince, thank you.
My only concern is that they have put on their letter for their request that a clean up team in the park after the meet, I would like a caveat on that that says providing any damage is either paid for or repaired, and now I propose that this is put through as a agenda item.
Not under debate.
Well, yeah, I've noted Vince's comment, so he would say that if they go ahead, that they also wouldn't repair any damage, so I think we've talked about it before, that when there was big chunks taken out, they didn't just clear up the horse manure, but they also repaired the big holes in the horses. So, moving around, anybody? Michael?
Yeah, honestly, next agenda item, we need to consider it because the circus is also requesting use of land, is there room for both a hunt and the circus?
The hunt normally congregate on the edge near Burley Road car park in the dip, predominantly where the skate park is and over towards Burley Road, and the people that go there, which can be five, 600 people at least, congregate on the mounds, the hills, or the old sort parts of the moat that look down onto where the hunt collects. My perspective is that they will both fit, but that's agreed, yeah. Anyway, anybody else have any comments?
Would there be any conflict then if we are renting out cuts close to the circus, that they may say, well, we've rented the park, but you've also allowed the hunter to use it?
We don't charge the hunt.
I know, but you charge the circus, we charge the circus.
We charge the circus, yeah, well, we charge organisations that are there on profit making.
But the circus will be charged?
Yeah.
And will there be any comeback from them to say, well, we've already paid for this, but you're allowing the hunt free on there, on the same?
No, because the stance that we took when we agreed to do charges on the area was that it would be based on charitable organisations wouldn't pay it, and the hunt actually used that opportunity to raise money for charity, yeah.
I'm not making that point, what I'm saying is that the circus are paying for cuts close.
No, well, if they get on, they will be doing it.
If we agree to it, they're paying for cuts close, are they going to then come back and say, well, we've paid for cuts close, but you allow somebody else on as well?
They might do, but I don't see it as an issue, at the end of the day, it's our part, not theirs, we determine how it's going to be used.
Okay.
Stan?
My remark really is a bit negative, I suppose, because I think one of the things which you have to take into consideration is the weather prior to meet. If there has been a lot of rain, it will be just mud everywhere.
Yes, we have this before.
So what happens after that, what's the recovery?
Yep, that's a valid point, and this is coming before on the hunt, had to come back and do some repair work, but I'm saying that, we had a bit of a fairground once, where they had to come back a week or so later when their vehicles churned up and put great big channels in the soil, so it would apply both ways. But previously, the hunt have cleaned up after themselves, so.
Come back again, but we must have a caveat in that contract.
Yep, about making sure it's put?
Making sure it's made good as found.
Okay. Jasmine, do you want to make any comments?
I've got several.
Several comments? Okay. I'm going to start the clock on Jasmine.
Well firstly, I have been asked to pass on from the county council of quite a few residents raising concerns over Oakham Town Council seeming to support the hunt by letting it start there, and it not going out to public consultation for public grounds.
Okay.
That's point one. On to the circus, so that's already been mentioned. Now, I agree it's a traditional thing, but my argument is there's quite a lot of things that would fall under being traditional that no longer happen. Capital punishment, caning children in schools, the list is endless. I'm wary that now in September this year, one of the workers was pleaded guilty and fined for covering badger sets.
Yes, this was in the paper, really?
Yeah. Now, so they start the hunt at cuts close, and you read their website and they go off and legally do their hunt, but if they are sticking within the law, why are they filling badger sets?
Why have one individual, one individual, let's not condemn?
But would he not have been told what to do by the people doing the hunt? And I just think we need to be careful with it being such a politically sensitive thing of seeming to support it, there are plenty of other places they can start their hunt from.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
Hey, Martin?
I have similar reservations to the councillor here, I do go down and photograph it every year, it's quite a spectacle tradition, in fact, I said to the councillor here that, you know, we don't throw people to the lions anymore, you know, so on the same basis, traditions, fox hunting is quite barbaric. When, when, before I looked into this, when I moved to Oakham, I thought, oh, it's just a meet, and they bring the eagle down, and when you actually look into it and find out that everyone's going up, what a lovely eagle, that eagle tears a fox to pieces. Cotis More Hunt haven't been prosecuted that many times, they have been prosecuted before, and they're probably, not the only one in Leicestershire, Atherton I think is in trouble at the moment, but they all come very close to the line. In 2004, it was reported in the Melton Times that they were going to break the law, and many years we've had very explicit stickers on vehicles, people, I won't say the word, but if some of you might know it, it referred to Tony Blair, it is a political event, the hunt master makes a speech, not all the public may hear that, but it is political, and cuts close is not a political playground, it's a place for people to go and enjoy. Moving on to the next item of the circus, most of these circuses and fairs have dogs attached to their caravan, the hounds.
Sorry, what did you say, we're not talking about?
No, I'm just saying, are concerned, but we've got to make a decision, yes, most of them have dogs. The hounds, great, but very unruly, they get into trouble when they go to Uppingham because they run in and out of the pubs, the shops, you know, they run everywhere in cuts close, are they going to fight a dog that's chained? You know, that's the issue I have, I'd much rather see that they go somewhere else. When this council hesitated about it a couple of years ago, they did approach the people in charge of the marketplace, they said no, now you have to ask why they said no.
Okay, all right.
And also, if you are going to go with it, each year, the consumption of alcohol has increased to the extent, and I've mentioned it as a member of the public, that they set up a table and bar in our park. Now, an ordinary man in this town, I saw at an event, was approached by the police and had his beer tipped away, he wasn't bothering anyone, it was due to the nonsense rule we have in the park.
Right, okay.
But nobody, nobody stops these people knocking back quite a large consumption of alcohol on Boxing Day morning because they're the hunt, they're more important, and I just find it, well, I won't get too passionate about it, but I just find it, it's a spectacle, that's why people go.
Right.
Online, people have said to me.
I'm going to stop you there.
No, sorry, I'm just saying, online, people have said that they hate this event, please support the circus.
Point of order, Count of Brooks, I'm now stopping you there, it's 15, you've gone three minutes fifteen, and it's now starting to get personal, so for your own benefit, I'm stopping you there.
There's no time limit to what you have, and I was winding it up, you always interrupt when I was winding it up.
Can they be asked to start in the marketplace? Right.
No, the marketplace don't want them.
You said can they be asked to start in the marketplace?
Right.
Count of Lucas?
I will be, I will be voting against this, I have asked for years, so I'll say it again to the new members. They come, the horses and dogs defecate.
And you're a mate.
Can I not be in?
Sorry, Joyce, I've just got a bit wound up, sorry.
They defecate, the lads come, they clean up, the horse muck, sorry to have to be blunt, the dogs that are, the visitors are let to roam freely, they defecate, the lads don't pick up, the dog muck. We've had snow where everybody's been walking in the, in the mess, churning up the mess with snow. Now, I have been saying for ages it should be in the marketplace where there are pubs, that's what it's about, it's about the stirrup cup. Now, what is the difference, I do not know, but Uppingham on New Year's Day, hold the, the meat is held on New Year's Day in Uppingham, in the marketplace. Now, don't tell me that our marketplace can't accommodate, that's what I'd heard the clerk say, it's not big enough. Well, Uppingham manage, it's easy to pick up the mess. Uppingham don't have it on Todd's piece, they have it in the marketplace, and I cannot say why we have to have it on grassland. It's not a question of whether I'm for the meat, for the hunt, against the hunt, I'm against where it is held.
Okay, thank you. Right, I'm not going to ask for any more comments from anybody else. Vince said that he would, and hopefully he will still stick with this, so he would support this going ahead with a caveat, which I think is the same as what our comments will add in, is that any damage and any mess is cleared up as they've done in previous years. So the proposal for you, thank you, Count of Lucas.
They haven't cleared up.
Count of Lucas, point of order, if it's good enough for Count of Brooks, it's good enough for everybody. We'll not have interruptions in this meeting.
That's my order.
Count of Lucas.
That is my apology, sir.
I apologise, Count of Lucas, for interrupting while she was apologising to me. Councillor?
I'd like to add a caveat that they don't, that they don't set up or are not permitted to set up a bar in our park.
I like, that's a good point.
I'm more than happy to add that caveat to the proposal.
Okay, so it's one moment, we've got a proposal from Councillor Howard, that if they go ahead, that they clean up any mess, they clean up any damage, and the setting up of a bar is perceived to be inappropriate and should be removed, yes?
Well, it is actually illegal.
Yes, yeah.
Part of our bylaw says that you can't drink in the bar, so therefore, as long as they abide by that, then that will be fine.
Yes, well, that'll be all. Anyway, so that's the proposal, anybody want to second that?
You get breathless for driving a horse.
I could ask.
Drunken, drunken disservice, yeah. I'll second that proposal then. So proposal, I've been, seconded by Adam, all those in favour of this issue, you and I, have been here, anybody else? All those against? One, two, three, four, six, seven, so two for, the rest against, so that's all. Okay?
My apologies for getting a bit over, but I was quite passionate about this.
Guys, at one point, guys and ladies, at one point, we mentioned Romans in the declaration, with all due respect, let's stick to the point, you know, Romans, I mean, I'm a Christian, so I'm really offended by that.
They never threw any Christians to the lions.
Right, so obviously, can we notify the hunt about the Romans of the proposal? Right, number nine is request to use cuts close. Goodnight, Richard. Request to use cuts close. Anybody want to kick this off?
I'd like to start on that one.
Yeah?
Break this to the other one, the damage of the park was mentioned, it was on a four-legged animal that's actually used to go around in a field, whereas we will be bringing on lorries which are probably about 25 tonnes worth of vehicle on four tyres, which has the potential of ripping up an ancient monument, so therefore, I would like to kick this off by saying, we would like to offer them alternative location, probably Royce Planfield, that'd be a good point.
Churn up Royces, huh? Okay, any other comments? Go around the table? At least, you watched what the CCTV gave it, it's bitter, didn't it?
How much do they pay?
So £100.
£100 a day.
£100 a day they get charged.
And they have to make, and they have to make good?
They have to.
Make good any damage?
Terms and conditions, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, Alison's right.
And what's the history, have they made, have they made good damage?
There's only one incident, I've noted, Martin, there's only one occasion when we've, when we've, I believe we had a fair on the place, and they came back a couple, about a week later, in fact, because they couldn't do it straight away, and it was inappropriate to do it straight away because of how solid the ground was, so they came back a week or so later and filled in the holes and dressed it. They didn't exceed it, they didn't order that. Anyway, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Anyway, going around, Alf, Stan?
No.
Jasmine?
Yeah, well, they, as long as leaving it as it's found, will they take some responsibility for any extra rubbish while we're there that may accumulate?
You could build that into the proposal if it goes out, that they make sure that they clean up as fast. And leave any loose change, also. Martin?
Yes, they haven't told us in this whether they're actually going to put something on actually on Boxing Day, I'd like to think, because maybe the public haven't seen this, it's not just purely a circus, it's a very family orientated thing and a small fun fair and that, and I, I think that it would be very good if, perhaps, if it is on? if it is on Cuts Close that the town council, because we don't actually do anything with the money we get from it, is that we don't charge them on the basis that perhaps on Boxing Day they put something on for the public, family.
Maybe, maybe it's horses and dogs down there, people in that condition.
Well, no, Adam, we've moved on from there. But, but people, when we're in on that subject, people do come down for something and that's something that's not going to happen this year, it's over very quickly and people wander around endlessly. So I was just thinking if the council could approach these people on the basis that we waived the fee in return for perhaps free fun fair, Boxing Day afternoon, and then they paid for their tickets for the workshops for the children.
Michael, can they, can, can the issue about the indentations of twenty tonne lorries be solved by them being asked, forced to put down heavy duty track road engineers, style, matching?
The problem, the problem that you may encounter at the moment is that that soil on Cuts Close is heavily waterlogged as we stand at the moment. Somebody has taken a car uh, from the Burley Road entrance and driven it all the way around the park. And it's left an indent of about one and a half inches into the soil of the, the, um, park itself. So if you were to put some form of Bailey type, yes, I would agree. But I would dare say that you wouldn't be able to cover the whole park and if you were there for over a week, you'd damage the grass.
Yeah, it would kill the grass, okay.
That would be my personal.
I think it would, it would be, it would probably, they wouldn't want to come along based on cost alone because I would think they hadn't got that. And I saw what they did when they did the trees at the, around the castle.
It killed it.
It, yeah.
Killed the grass and that was less than.
Good point, well brought out. I think it might be on start. Any other comments on this?
The only comment I've got, of course, that circuses were on Royce's wreck.
But to be, to be fair, circuses and fairs historically are not on either park in the winter. And are we being used as a, as a winter stall for a week?
Okay.
For a hundred pounds a day?
I don't know, right, let me just come over, just come over to Count Brookes's end and then I'll come to.
Just for that bit, no, they, they live on a huge site in Griefen, I know the site. Um, and we, we, we also do accommodate Pinder's Circus during the winter months.
Right, okay.
And it's very well attended.
Sorry, so what, what I want to say is, um, talking about Royces, uh, I personally would be anti Royces and I'll tell you why. There's a lot of houses down that road.
Yeah.
And if I was living in one of those houses, I wouldn't want that fair there. And I'm willing to bet if you knock on every door and ask the mother to see the circuits there, they would say no. Okay, George?
I was only commenting on that because members of the public, of members of the public perhaps didn't know that they were used to be circuses, that's all.
Okay.
I, I'm.
Yes, sorry, focus.
I think it's.
Okay, so we got a proposal then from anybody on this, should, anybody want to propose that we allow chipperfield to buy?
Well, I'd like to sort of, members to consider what I asked about the Boxing Day thing. At some point over the Christmas period that it's sponsored by Oakham Town Council rather than just taking six hundred pounds from them and stashing it away for something else.
If the council overmind to propose that the chipperfield are allowed to use it, uh, with the proviso they get one day free because they allow one day worth of local events.
Sort of need to vote on it first.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get.
So let's, let's establish whether we want the circus there. So anybody want to propose that the circus is, chipperfields is used in part?
Well, it's, it's more than the circus, isn't it? It's the circus, the workshops and the fun fair, yeah.
So are you proposing?
I propose that they're given permission.
Right, Count Brookes is proposing that the circus is allowed to go ahead on Cuts Close. A second for that.
Can, sorry, can we have in it about being left as found and a daily?
Yes, yeah, all the, all the normal caveats, that it has to be all repair, any damage has to be put on.
Are we, I'm sorry.
Throughout the period as well, it's going to be more rubbish.
Once we've agreed, if they're going to use it, are we going to then move on to like the things like, as it says in there, the cost and any caveats that can be added?
We can, we can do that, let's establish if they're going to get on there first. I'll do it as a second bit to this. So anybody want to second that proposal? Jasmine, all those in favour of chipperfield using cuts? Raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, five, four, all those against? One, two, three, three, I'm, Vince, are you?
No, I'll abstain.
Okay, so it would be going on.
Three against, one abstention of five, four.
Yeah, so that means they'll go there. And, uh, just as a, just as an addition to that agenda item, uh, I'm not sure how you're going to do this, really, if I'm honest with you, but the, uh, the circus put on some free workshops or something?
Well, particularly Boxing Day, if we can come to some negotiation with Richard that, that that cost is reduced from the fee.
Anyone have any comments?
Because I think that would be a nice sort of thing for the town council.
If they say no, then they get charged five pounds, they get charged on the ground a day.
I'm, I'm not sure where we're going with this. It's a good idea, but I'm not sure where we're going with it.
What I'd suggest is that we, uh, once you communicate with them and sort of say, look, it's going to cost a hundred pound a day, however, if you do something which is free entry on Boxing Day, then we could relieve.
We can leave it to Richard to negotiate.
As a proposal, yeah.
And then we could have publicity for.
That'll be a proposal, you happy to make that as a proposal then?
Yeah, because, but then if they say no, if they say no.
The proposal is that they are told that they can go on Cuts Close, obviously, that it's a hundred pound a day, but would they be prepared on Boxing Day to put on some free events or not charge and we will not charge them for that day? And that a negotiation goes off between the clerk and them.
So they don't, they don't pay for one?
They don't pay for one day, if they say no, then they pay for it, okay? So that's pretty much the proposal, isn't it?
So who wants to propose that?
Proposed it by Martin, Mike proposed it, anybody want, seconded by Michael, all those in favour of that? One, two, three, four, five, six, all those against? I'm against, Michael's against and Vince is abstaining.
He'll be abstaining again.
Okay, that was straightforward, wasn't it? Item ten. Consultation and decide as well to allow CCTV pole situated. Now, I was the person that turned around and said to Hugh Crouch, who hasn't happened unfortunately is ill today anyway and couldn't make it, that we did not need to hear any more from Rutland County Council because I felt that those that had attended the consultation, I think Joyce, Martin and the members of the public, that we'd gleaned enough information, I've looked at it on the web, uh, yeah, I've looked at the communications, members of the public, there's communication being sent back by, from yourselves, isn't there, to Hugh Crouch and I've seen those as well. Um, oh, Mark Lauren, isn't it? Mark Lauren, I've seen communications from Mark Lauren in regard to this, answering questions that have been brought up since the consultation. I'm going to pass this round the table, anybody don't have any comments or observations they'd like to make? Okay, Michael?
Well, I'm not sure what it was you heard, but the gentleman that spoke earlier uh, said quite categorically that the sample of opinion that was taken was loaded.
Yes.
In the sense that a leading question was asked and not the relevant question, so it seems, that seems as if that whole work was irrelevant.
If, that appears to be the case, and whereas, uh, with all due respect, it might sound like I'm talking about turning out. I've seen the documents that have also been sent through from Mark Lauren and I've also heard what Hugh Crouch has said. And I think it's fair to say that their interpretation of it is contradicts the members of the public. So it's, and I'm not saying that we believe or disbelieve either Rutland County Council or members of the public. We have to make a decision based on it's our land, it's a CCTV pole, do we feel it's inappropriately situated? Do we feel it will achieve the aim? So the consultation took place when, at the last meeting, the town council said we could not pass it because we felt they have not done a full and thorough consultation. Still feels that hasn't been achieved because it's got loaded questions. Mark Lauren and Hugh Crouch have turned around and said, well, we have done it. Only two people turned to put the consultation at the council. Um, the majority of people that they spoke to on the door-to-door knocks, they said, albeit with these loaded questions, uh, were in favour of it. I think, I think there's, I think the council, the councillors have to decide, do they believe what this says and what the members of the public here say, or do they believe what the county council say? And do we need to have that CCTV pole in that situation? Do we need to have it somewhere else on Cuts Close?
Well, it seems such a fundamental point that the question you ask, and if you ask the question, do you believe that there should be some cover for the area, gentlemen said, the general view of wanting, if you, if you ask a narrow specific question, should it be situated where it is or not?
Everyone says yes.
That's a totally different question. If they didn't ask that question, it's difficult to see how it gets in any way.
I'm going to come round the table that way because that's where I've started this time, so I'll come to, uh, Martin.
Yeah, um, I have not been happy with this from the start and I've not, the Rutland County Council have made a number of apologies. And, um, I don't think they've actually apologised to this council for what they've done, but they've apologised via their leader to the members of the public via that meeting. Um, from what I gauge, no one objects in principle to the CCTV. They may feel they don't need it, but the pole itself is huge, it's in the wrong place. Visually, I'm not looking at it from where I live there or whatever, I look at it as a person who walks past and thinks, what's the, that doing there? You know, it is, it is in the wrong place.
So you're against it?
Yeah, I'm just going to, and obviously.
I'm just making notes.
Yeah, you put me off. Um, but the, if, you know, as the member of the public said, I was at that meeting and it was actually my request that the expert went with Rutland County Council the next day was their answer to look for an alternative position in that road. They haven't done it, or they may have visited, but they've not put an alternative forward because they want to put it on our land. Now, my view is if the council votes for it, that is land we hold, whether in trust or whatever for the public. So if Rutland County Council, like if we want to put a bench or a bollard, we have to have certain legal documents. And I believe that if the pole has to stay, which I don't think it does, we should have a way leave agreement with an annual fee, simple as that, to protect the council's property. But as I put in an email this week, I believe if the council and the expert feel that that is the ideal location, then I don't see any reason, looking at the untidy setup of the whole system, why that pole cannot be replaced with a smaller pole, with a transmitter to a larger pole out of sight. Because that's the problem, is that the large pole is needed to transmit further away. And it doesn't mean that pole can't be tucked away in a corner.
Okay, let's, let's give somebody else a chance to, uh, to sit, let's get some perspective on this. Jasmine, you got anything else?
Well, no, I think they need to consult the whole of Oakham about the whole area of CCTVs here, then I agree the location isn't in.
I think, I think the members of the public have consulted all of them actually looking at this, so, and it has been in the papers recently, Alf?
Very disappointed in the way that Rutland County Council handled this. It's been poorly handled from the start.
That's why we kicked it out.
And it sounds like it's been continued that way. And obviously we've got nobody here tonight from the county council to advise us on how it is. I'm positive that we need something there for monitoring, um, antisocial behaviour, possible drug dealing as well, I hear, and things are not getting any better. So we do need something there, whether this is the right thing is something else.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Sorry, take it on later.
Um, interesting point made under the member of the public's deputation to know. Uh, and that's the statement which I would need to know before I could vote for it. And that is, um, that, that the, the member of the public said, we would all be in favour if it was in the right place. And the statement was made, it's in the wrong place and it's not covered. I'd want to know the range of the camera, where it needs to go to cover where the problem area is. And until I know where that is, I, I can't possibly vote for it. And I, I agree with Alf, I think that Rutland County Council have handled this appallingly.
Okay, Michael, anything?
I'll echo, there's two comments.
Yeah, Vince?
Um, on the report, it says drug dealing, antisocial behaviour. Um, have we actually got a report from you please that says where the antisocial behaviour is and the drug dealing? Because having played on that park, believe it or not, I was square once, and I'm laughing at it. Um, I believe that the residents have been encroached on by what is a carbuncle on that green land and there is no drug dealing going on there. If you're dealing with drugs, you do it out of the way, apparently. Any antisocial behaviour would not be carried out in the middle of the park, it would be carried out on the boundaries and the peripherals. So therefore I would suggest that we would throw this out and ask for a full, um, consultation with the residents of the adjoining area to the park, not just uh, those that are on the front side of the park, because it involves everybody. Joyce?
Anything, you want to add?
Yeah, I, I just got to add, of course, that, uh, uh, one of our, that is a postman now was actually beaten up on that park. But there we are, even I remember that one, that's years ago.
Oh, okay, right, let's, um, let's, can we?
Can I just finish?
You can, yes, yes, as long as you don't mention postman again.
Right, I think like Altonstown, that, uh, we have been misled. That RCC, by, by RCC, I think they have a duty of, I was going to say a duty of care. But it just appeared. I live the nearest to that, apart from the members of the public. And I can see that from my bedroom, front bedroom window. In fact, I can see the community holder, new goes in and out of there. So, you know, it just appeared one day. Can I also say that RCC have put, replaced that light at the end of the road and it's appalling. You can't, it's no better.
It's no relevant.
So it's still dark.
Let's come to Michael then.
Well, only to add, what I said before, I think that the, the point that seemed to be uh, seem to be a different view about isn't one of opinion, it's one of fact. What question did they ask?
Absolutely.
So, and that ought to be on record, so I'm going to do it again, recall the questions asked and the responses.
Right, uh, Alf?
So I'll just come back on one thing, I think we've got to be positive here with Rutland County Council.
Yes.
It's not just a matter of saying no, if that's what we're going to say. We've got to really ask, um, if they've done full consultation, also other possibilities for the location of that pole, which we haven't had as far as I can.
Well, I think Martin alluded to this where they haven't probably, it was mentioned, no, it was mentioned on the night and it was discussed. And whether they've actually done that or not, I do not know. Right, somebody is going to have to come up with a proposal on this. Martin?
I think the proposal is what is there, that the proposal is we tell them that it can't stay there.
Can't stay.
I don't think we need to tell them to go away and do another consultation because they don't seem to have the ability to do that.
All of the council here has just said that they are, they want a consultation.
But there's no point, because we've got Upingham now up in arms, they're putting on Facebook that the council stars it.
Yeah, okay.
You know, they're not consulting with people. Well, the proposal's what's there, that we, we decide whether to allow the CCTV pole to be situated, that's what I'm here for this evening, and I would vote against it.
That, well, yeah.
So, you know, they, they haven't come back in a proper way to us, or the residents.
Yeah, no, what's the proposal then?
Well, the proposal is that we, we just tell them that it's not acceptable in the current location and should be removed.
Right, so proposal from Martin?
If they do come up with a
Okay, we've, we've got the gist of it.
A, a alternative location, then the council may reconsider.
What Mike says is that, uh, it, the Oakham Town Council say the CCTV pole should not be situated where it is and that Rutland County Council should do a, a consultation.
No.
No, just remove it. Just remove, just remove it.
Remove it, but if they come up with an alternative location which would affect us, then they come back to us for, well, you've got a positive thing in it, so that's the positive thing.
Sorry, I think you're confusing the situation by mentioning it like that.
Yeah.
Right, let's put, let's, I think that the, what it is, you are right, two, two things, one, you're right, one, you're wrong. The thing you're right on is that let's focus on the agenda item. And the agenda item is, is whether to allow the CCTV pole situated to remain in its current location and you're saying not. Okay, let's deal with that. I'm sorry, but that's, that's the proposal, second please.
Well, I'll second that, I'll make them.
Yeah, no, I, I just, what it is, is we, we're voting either to put it there or not put it there.
I don't think it's as simple as that.
I don't think Sting Adams do it in Bitbit.
Well, I'm doing it by what it says here because
Yeah.
The councillor said no, and, and everybody that's sat around here said no, except for me. Um, so Martin's saying to the agenda item, to allow the CCTV pole to stay, no. So Martin's saying, to the agenda item, to allow the CCTV pole to stay, no. Second me by Vince.
Yeah, but I think we have already amongst us say we need something there. By doing it this way, we're saying no to everything.
No, we're not, that's why.
We should always add it a piece afterwards.
Well, no, I mean, I think we have to do it now, when I do it.
All right, and so Martin's saying no with a caveat.
If that, if the proposal is that it doesn't stay removed, I will vote against that.
Yes.
Because I think there's more to it than that.
Okay.
Because they did it there to you, they just stuck all the cabling in there.
Right, let's, let's go this, because it's, I mean, it's, can I, it's the end of the day, it's a poll.
Can I just ask Alf, are you making another proposal?
I can make a gamble, but.
Well, we've already got proposals.
Well, I was trying, sorry, chairman, I was trying to put in.
Martin, you carry on.
I was trying to put in the caveat that if they felt there was another location for the pole to be located within Royce Recreation Ground, then they can come for consent.
So not where it is?
But it's got to go from where it is.
Is that not acceptable, what you're saying?
Yeah.
Right, well, that's the proposal from Martin, that it doesn't go where it is, but if they come back with an alternative location, we'll look at that.
Oh.
Yes?
Yeah, but that's what they promised us at the meeting they were gonna do, and they didn't do it.
Does anybody wanna second what Martin has just proposed? Let's deal with these proposals as they come up. Does anybody wanna second that?
So it's an alternative location in Royce.
In Royce, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, they may decide to move it onto the pavement, like they threatened us with last year.
So, right, okay. Martin, thank you. So Martin's proposal is that it doesn't stay where it is, that they come back with an alternative location on Royce's.
If required.
And then it comes back to the council, seconded by Martin.
I can have clarification of this, because I'm not sure what we're doing.
Right.
We've got to guess.
Hang on, right, you can quieten it please, because I just need to have a drink of water, right over myself.
Let Alf show what he wants in it, because he might.
I don't know. Can I order, 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 order? Can everybody be quiet, please? It's a CCTV pole. This is what we've got. Martin has said we do not want the CCTV pole to stay in its current location on Royce's Field.
Yeah.
However, if Rutland County Council come up with an alternative location, which is still on Royce's Field, which affects us, they come back and consult with us.
Yes, and the residents.
That is, that's the proposal.
Which they should have done in the first place.
And Michael, are you still prepared to second that? Okay. Have we got that, anyone to all this?
Yeah.
All right, vote on that proposal. You two got a vote. Jasmine, one, two, three. All right, we'll put that as, I'm against it, so everybody's for it, against it. So that's part, so basically what it means is the pole's not going where it is, but it might be going somewhere else.
It's got to be taken down.
It's gotta be removed. That's what we've said. Right. Do we need a ten minute recess? I'm gonna go to the polls. Right, it's a very, you don't have to remain for the rest of the meeting, because then we might start. I might start to be late, if I'm heading like an adult. It's obviously a very emotive. Let's see what comes back from Rutland County Council. Well, they've got to do what we say. Thank you all for listening to, I'll probably say twice, and your best today. Thank you for your time. Okay. Right.
Yeah, well, no, well, no, well, no.
Right, let's, let's refocus. Right, thank you very much for what has been a very difficult. I know, because it's getting the wording, it's getting the wording right.
Can we please just have it put through the chairman rather than.
Well, this is one of the problems.
It's happening at council, it's happening here as well, and I think we've got to stop that. We've got to do that more professionally.
Okay. Housing allocation policy number eleven is to consider and list appropriate changes and to make any decisions, if we have any decisions. Anybody got any comments on the orange paper? Alf?
I'll second that.
Can we go back to the home page? The proposal we accept, and it was seconded by Vince. Okay, well, yeah, because most, I think most people have read this online. I've made some notes, and I was gonna accept it, because
Changes are all positive.
The only observation I made is I was interested to see that they are rationalising it, which means they're reducing down. It becomes from thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-one works down to twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy-five.
That's good.
Proposed by Alf, seconded by Vince, that we, we accept the report. Yes, all those in favour? You know us. All right. Budget. Number twelve is the budget. Has anybody got any comments or observations? It's the green paper, what it is, Richard's, yeah, it's Richard's paper. It's laid out what the budget is for two sixteen seventeens, forty-six thousand eight hundred pounds for the planning part. Anybody got any comments? Alf?
The increase is totally for the information's working group on this, isn't it? I'm assessing that we're going to be seeing something like a ten percent increase in in the, what's it, whatever it's called.
Activities?
No.
Precept.
Precept, sorry, thank you, Joyce. We're gonna be seeing a ten percent increase in precept by the time we finish all this budget.
Possibly.
So it's around that. So people have got, or members have got to be assured that if they're going to agree these figures, how are they gonna tell the people who've collected many of those figures? Because by increases by ten percent, it's a massive increase, even though our precept is fairly small, it's still a massive increase, and it'll go down on the paper as a, whatever it is, a ten percent increase.
Yeah.
Which you've got to justify.
And I know there's been a lot with the financial things as well, with the financial system. Michael?
Haven't had a chance to look at this, and maybe the reformed, reconstituted finance working group will, but maybe as an alternative to that, that the council meets the ten percent out of its reserves, instead of asking for.
Okay, well, that's a, that's a potential, that's.
That's a decision for the council.
That's a decision later.
But it'll come back to council as well anyway.
Yes, but I only meant to say that that is the full perspective.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, it's.
I'm just trying to highlight that this year we're in for a large increase.
Does anybody think any of these budgets are too high and want to adjust any of them? That is what this is meant to be about. And to give you an idea, I mean, I believe that the planting and tree surgery budget of four thousand five hundred pounds could be reduced by five hundred to four thousand. And I believe that the additional maintenance of six thousand five hundred could be reduced down to six thousand pounds. And the reason I've come to those conclusions, I look at what they spent in two thousand and fourteen, and then what they've spent year to date this year, and they're being budgeted the same amount each year, but they're not getting anywhere near. So I think there's a potential saving of a thousand pounds. Martin?
I had just a minor concern about the budget for the play equipment. After meeting the gentleman from Wixby Inspections, who kindly pointed out that some of the recent repairs in Cuts Close are defective already. I think we should be looking at some of the reports and possibly thinking that that figure is too low. We have quite a, what is labelled moderate problem with the roundabout. Things like a seesaw, the bearings are gone again.
What value would you consider?
I had no idea, because I, but I'm just saying, I think it needs to be looked at, that report, to work out what's going to be needed to replace it. The mushroom seats have got mould all over, they're disgusting, and and he also tells me some of the new equipment is coming loose in Willow Crescent.
Okay, right.
And also, you say that a bench needs replacing at the corner of Long Row. I know that's come up before, but it doesn't figure in with the sum of what you're saying the estimated benches are. And I wonder why we continually, and I've said it as a member of the public, why we don't get quotes for these benches, because when I tell anybody the cost of these benches, they fall over and need a bench. I personally, as a person of meaning, think the Lion's Head ones are not Victorian, though I think they're ugly. I know some people have issue and rip out these concrete ones, but to me, when great fix is.
Not tricky budgets.
They're easy, but they, there's something wrong with that figure on the street furniture, I think.
Okay, right.
Because also they're maintained every year.
All right, Alf?
Sorry, so long ago, I can't remember what it was now. Oh, yes, we only have to, we only have to note this.
Yeah, we only have to know, we don't have, I mean.
This can change to a later day.
It could change, I mean, if you have opinions, you could always drop them on email through to Richard and sort of say, I mean, I'll be saying to him, like, that's right, I think this amount should be coming down from here, but put a reason for it. I mean, mine could put, I think the benches should go because whatever, or the play equipment rather. So if you do suggest that it goes up, then say why it should. I'll come to Joyce, and I'll come back around again.
The Lion's Head seats, it was agreed that we'd do a rolling programme in the centre of town with the Lion's Head, and that anything out of the historic core area could be cheaper, but nicer than the concrete ones.
Okay.
I wouldn't like to see the rolling programme stopped. So one bench, if it's only one bench outside Wilco's, but, but the one on Long Row could actually be a cheaper option, a cheaper but nicer option than what we have. And the other thing is, I've just got to say about planting and tree surgery, don't forget we're taking, oh, they think we're taking over the cemetery, and we've got about forty trees there.
Yeah, I know that, and I've looked at it. And just before I let Michael speak, in two thousand and fourteen, we spent two thousand thirty-six pounds on planting and tree surgery.
Yeah.
So far this year, we spent two thousand nine hundred and seventy-two, and yet we've got four thousand five hundred pounds in the budget for next year. Are we gonna be, and the thing is, when we take over the cemetery, we're taking it over on the presumption that Rutland County Council will be doing some pre-works. So next year, we shouldn't be incurring huge bills for trees. If we are, then we haven't done our homework. Anyway, I'm gonna come round, because Michael had his digit up.
I was just saying, in relation to what the mayor said, I think it's in Richard's mind, and perhaps will be in the rest of the finance group's mind to have final figures for December the ninth.
Yeah.
That will be, that'll be a decision point.
We've still got till January to make those amendments.
I suppose, I suppose December the ninth would be fixed, so why run it right up to the last minute?
Yes, we don't leave everything to the last minute.
No, no, they're still not just.
I think the idea about people who've got ideas about this, I would say that it gets emailed through to Richard, and sort of with a reason, a justification. So Joyce's reason is a good one, that we are taking over the cemetery. Maybe I missed that point. The thing is that we need to put it over to Richard, but we also need to be mindful of the fact of what Alf has said, that, yeah, it could have an impact of ten percent increase. And at a later date, if the council decides it wants to tap into its reserves, because it's not paying it on the fitness centre nowadays, then it can do that. Anybody else got any other comments? Are we just gonna do an agenda item that we've acknowledged and that the members will let the clerk know their thoughts?
I propose that the agenda item is noted, and that members can let the clerk know.
And seconded by Stan. All those in favour? You none of us? Thank you very much. Sure. Grounds maintenance, to receive a report and make any decisions on the grounds maintenance, which is coming up for renewal next year. Richard has also, there's loads of decisions on here, isn't there? We'll never get through this, it's all next. Martin?
Well, I was going to suggest that, that as this is for next year, that it's deferred, because we don't actually know whether we're gonna take over the cemetery, because that's always.
It's not just the cemetery, Steve.
No, no, but that's a condition in here. We're being asked whether we need to tender, with that included or not included. We don't know if we're going to take it over. Yes, this council did vote, but probably the majority of the people on this council didn't vote for it. So perhaps we should be having a new vote on that, like we did for the moon.
Who, in December?
Sorry?
It'll be up in December.
Yeah, but I was, I would think that people on the committee are probably, hopefully pushing Rutland County Council to do what was required. But I don't see much evidence of Rutland County Council doing it. So I think this whole thing should be deferred, unless, unless we just separate, and if there is a time constraint thing, and we just go for the normal grounds thing, and we tender as the clerk wants it through the national thing, the press and all sorts.
Alf?
The idea of tendering together is gonna get a better price, gee, if we go for grounds maintenance and cemetery at the same time. The conundrum is that we don't know yet when or if we're gonna take the cemetery over.
And we can make an informed decision if we get a quote on the cemetery.
We can do. Obviously, whether we can put into the contract that the council may be looking for further work on the Oakham Cemetery in the near future. I don't think we can, thinking about it, but it's a nice thought. But, you know, I think you've got to go for grounds maintenance, because it may be October before we take it.
You need to do the grounds maintenance one.
The grounds maintenance must go through, it can't be deferred, because you've got a timescale there to hit.
Yeah, okay. Right, okay. Any other comments, Vince?
Just to sort of bolster what Alf said, really, the fact that when the contract or when the proposal goes out, that it's made clear that there may not be the cemetery.
Okay. What I, okay, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna lead us through this, right, one item at a time, so we're gonna vote on each of these. And the first one is, right, so are there any changes required to the schedules detailed above for the open spaces the council is currently responsible for? So this is what we currently have to do, just on the parks and the recreational grounds. Has anybody got any changes they wanna make, yes or no?
No.
So I would propose that there are no changes made to the current open spaces council schedule.
Seconded. Frequency of cuts, or number of cuts.
Is this going to include the cemetery?
No.
Sorry, I'm, no, because I've got a thing to say about that.
No, the cemetery will be the next comment. So this is just what we currently have on our maintenance programme. Do we want to change it, yes or no? So the proposal is, is we do not change it, that's what I've proposed. Before you say no again, Vince, before you say yes again, Vince.
As it is the opportunity, and they don't cost that much, I was wondering during the peak seasons of the summer, whether we could get them to fit in an afternoon litter clearing in, or lunchtime clearing in Cuts Close, because it can be appalling by three o'clock, four o'clock in the evening. Because they do it first thing very well, and then by the time we've had a bit of sun, the bins are overflowing and.
Martin is adding a caveat that they do a second litter pick. I think that will cost the earth, because they're there wanting to do it, and then they leave the area.
Well, no, they charge about ten pounds, I reckon.
Yeah, because they're there doing it when they cut the grass.
If you're going, sorry, no, yeah, if you're going to do that, you need to have a schedule of rates, which we don't have attached to this, and that is for any additional litter picking, cuts close will cost X pounds or whatever. If you leave it without that, you'll get, whoever it is, it's a successful contractor, will be able to put their own price on it, which then becomes very expensive. So if, if you ask for a schedule of rates for certain operations, then whoever is the supervising officer, and I'll come to that in a minute, can then ask the contractor to do that additional work at the price quoted in the schedule of rate, and we know what it is.
So what are you proposing then?
I'm proposing, but.
Ben, Martin?
I can't hear.
I'm proposing that, although we go out for this work, we also have a schedule of rates for the work to be undertaken, like.
Additional works?
Yeah, additional, if you want an additional grass cutting, what happens in the summer if we have a red hot summer, and the grass doesn't grow as quickly?
Yeah.
There's no need really to do that cut that week, that day. So we need to be able to have that flexibility built into the contract.
Okay, that's good. So two good ideas formed into one. So the proposal is then, which I'll let you steal my proposal then, that the that the, the schedule is the same as last year, but with an additional, what do you call it? Schedule of rates. Rates for any additional works, as one requires.
For example, an additional litter pick and additional grass cutting cuts flows, for instance, in each one.
Yeah.
Right, do you wanna, that's the proposal. Everybody understand it? Are you happy sending that?
More than happy.
Everybody in favour of that, have they spoken? You know us. Brilliant, well done. All right, now, working together, a team. Do you wanna sit next to him?
We're good.
Right, number two. Should the tender to the maintenance of the cemetery be separate from the tender for the maintenance of other open spaces? So do we want? Michael, I choose yes. Comments?
I, I think in this circumstances, unfortunately, probably yes.
Yes, but it's a big challenge.
But later on, we could combine it.
Yeah, if I was a contractor, I'm not sure how old tender for the cemetery, I didn't know when it was gonna start. And that's because any, any tender must obviously build up their equipment to do the work. It may be that, you might get a very, very good, good charge from.
Yeah.
We might get a very tender from somebody who's, I don't know, who just set up or is a small operation.
The cemetery tender includes digging graves.
Yes, well, it's some depth, I think.
Now, Dan?
Absolutely, sorry.
Got it, did you finish?
Yeah, got it.
Yeah, I can see it.
Not to say you're.
I, I would want to, I would want to question that.
I can't hear.
I would want to question that, because there are separate grave digs.
Yeah?
And that certainly, the cemetery that I was to look after, they had a separate grave digger. And the, the company that did the maintenance most certainly didn't do the grave.
No.
I, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I think I've got to finish putting that down.
Yeah, have we got, have we got two there, or is that, is that?
We've got two what there?
Grave diggers at the, uh, Paul Street.
No, no, they're, they're high health.
It is high, so it's subcontracted?
Yes.
Or potentially subcontracted.
Yeah. Right. Burke and Hare, I think. Right, Joyce, do you have a taste for that?
Did they dig, or did they dig up?
They dig up, no.
Uh, do they talk to me? Uh, the soil?
Yes, in the contract, they have to, they put a skip, I don't know why the cuss take soil away, but there was a skip there.
It was dreadful today, there's a recent internment there, and there's a great load of soil to be taken away.
Soil is removed.
Enough for two coffins, yeah? There's that much soil that's going to be taken away.
Right.
I haven't.
Yeah, sorry, I thought you'd finished it.
In the, in the cemetery one, there is nothing that says, how do we deal with pests? Because the rabbits are right, again. Not only evidence of where they've been, but I've seen two today. And the other thing is, I go down on a weekly basis now, and the litter bin, I think it says, it, it says something about when it's reasonably full or something. And I'm thinking, when is it going to be reasonably full? Because last week, the litter bins were absolutely overflowing all over the floor. Today, they have been emptied, they have run. But there is need a schedule of going down and doing the lit, uh, the litter bins. Pest control.
Right, which, okay. Mark, oh no, I'll come to Michael, because she's having a spoken.
Okay, how far down the road are we taking over the management of the cemetery?
At that close. In December, we've got an agenda item coming on where the question is, uh, because we've now got the, um, everything that we'd asked for, without going on to that, has been green lighted. And the Rutland, whereas Alf raised the point that they haven't, or somebody raised the point that they haven't done any work yet, or the work doesn't look like it's being done, Rutland County Council won't do the work until we say we're definitely taking it over. But we're making that decision in December, or I'm asking for us to make that decision in December, because it's gone on for twelve months.
Should we not then be considering this after that decision has been?
We can defer, we can defer the cemetery decision till December. We can put it on to December's meeting. Yeah?
Shut up.
Alf, sorry. I'll come to you now, Michael.
As far as I can see, the tender for grounds maintenance will come back in February time, is that right?
Uh, yes, yeah. It'll be, it'll take a couple of months.
Yes, I mean, this, they need at least a month run in, I think, to the, to the contract starting. So probably we'll be thinking about it, we'll probably agree on the contract in January, thinking about it. By then, hopefully, we will have made a decision and Rutland County Council have gone and done the work for us to take the cemetery over. Now, we are then to make a decision of whether it's going to be the first of April, some other dates.
Yes.
It would be nice to be able to link these two contracts together, um, because I think, um, we would get, get the benefit of, of that. But at the moment, we cannot do that. So I, I would say that we've got to go out initially with the, um, with the grounds maintenance. But perhaps we can have a caveat in that to say it is quite likely that, once we've got the date, the cemetery, the contract for the cemetery will be, um, put forward as well.
Yes. Okay.
But it's, it's been hairy very, I, 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 we, we, we cannot actually state when it's going to happen or if it's going to happen, which is, which is strange enough.
Okay, Martin.
Same, but one thing we must do is that have somebody who's nominated supervising officer to make sure this work is done. At the present time, it is quite obvious to me that, um, it's not managed at all.
Now, this came up in meetings that Joyce and Stan and I attended, where in actual fact, there've been occasions when the contractor hasn't done the work, and they've been pulled up, they have a fine system. Joyce?
One or two things. Um, nine point four. The contractor shall empty all litter bins within the cemetery routinely and before they are full. That's what I'm writing up. Now, uh, it is the rabbits, if I've gone down there today, the giant redwoods have blocked their needles, and they are four inches thick, and you can't find where the footpath is. Also, there is one headstone dated two thousand and eight, and there's now starting to lean. And that hasn't got any orange fancy paper. There's a lot to be done that people really ought to just go and have a look. You can't see the inches of the paths around by the giant redwoods at all, and I've just scraped them all away, just to show.
I'm going to come to Stan first, then Michael, then Alf, so Stan.
Sorry, keep going there. Um, seven point one five.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, no grave, let's see, two point four meter then.
What I meant to do was to convert that into what I understand.
Eight foot.
Eight inches. It was eight foot.
Two point four meters is eight foot.
Oh, in which case then, uh, yeah, it's a double one on top of the other. I was, I was concerned that sometimes you want, somebody wants to be buried on top of their wife. Perhaps I should rephrase that.
Yeah. Well, that's somebody else's wife. Right, Michael. Have your discussions with RCC on the subject of the cemetery to date been against the background of this document being available? Uh, we were aware of this document, yes.
Have you had it in your possession?
Yeah, I've read it, I've read it, I've gone through it, the fine tooth comb.
All right, so I'm leading off the point that Alf made, that, um, it seems, it does seem, uh, clear cut, that if this had all been carried out, carried out to a reasonable standard, good standard, whatever is the term, it wouldn't be in the mess it is.
Hit the nail on the head.
Yes, so.
It's a bit.
And is it Mark, um?
Lauren.
He's new, isn't he, to the job?
Newish, yeah.
Well, I know he's new, because I heard him talking about six months ago on some other subject.
Yeah.
And, um, that may or may not be relevant, he was in some similar job before, but, um, it's quite germane, isn't it, the, the failure to fulfil this?
Yes, and, uh, one of the reasons I think that we should go with this as the benchmark for what we should have tended against, is that that way, we know how much Rutland County Council pay. If we get a tender based on this document, then we know whether it's going to be in line with what they've been paying as well. And it's, and it's a start point, because we've never run a cemetery before.
Can we get, is it possible to get, as, um, Joyce has done with the neighbourhood plan, uh, uh, another, a document for a similar cemetery somewhere else? Cemetery maintenance document? Now, I'm alluding to your, what you did with neighbourhood plan in a separate area.
I don't know anything with neighbourhood plan.
Shall I, uh, lead you two to it? Alf?
Um, I, I don't think it would do as much good to get another one, Michael, because, um, each, each, um, contract is written for the cemetery which it applies to.
Hmm.
So, I mean, from what I've seen of this, and, and I used to work at Rutland District Council in the days when they ran that cemetery, and it was in very good condition, very good condition indeed.
Hmm.
I couldn't tell you what the cost was, but it was, um, no problem at all. And at that point, Joyce, you're talking about vermin, rabbits were still coming through from the railway line, and I was still doing it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you've got to have some form buried out, and then.
I think, I think what it is, we just have with British Rail, not to stop off and drop them there.
Yeah, but, um, I've got to come back to this point I made earlier on, if I'm right, my main.
Yeah.
And that is that, when we take on this contract, we must have a supervising officer nominated to look after it.
Yeah. No, that's.
And that's something we need to discuss at a future date, Joyce.
Yes.
A paid supervisor.
On our same page.
Okay, a supervisor. Martin? No, you're not the supervisor, you can talk.
No, no, I wouldn't have approved. Um, we're supposed to be sort of talking about the level of maintenance and that, but I, I don't, um, understand what sort of levels are really supposed to be, apart from this utter mess. But what concerns me about this is, um, it's never been put very clear to me what, what we're actually doing as a council. Are we just going to be managing the maintenance, or are we going to be responsible for everything? And if that's the case, where we're just, you know, there's an income, we don't like to talk about it, but there's an income, no one's ever mentioned that. I'm concerned, where's the money going to come from for this maintenance?
It's all in it. It's, it, the, the maintenance and what actually is required, it's all down to grave digging and all the rest of it, it's all contained within that document that's.
Yeah, I know, I'm saying, I'm talking about the overall cost of doing this, where's the money coming from?
Comes from the people that are buried.
But it hasn't said that.
Well, no, it's irrelevant to this.
That's a business report, I think.
Yes, it will come out in the cemetery meeting next month.
Right.
Yeah, there is, there is, there is enough money in it, allegedly.
Are we going to be, are we as a council considering then to take over the whole thing?
Yes.
That will become open town council property.
But it's not relevant to this.
Well, I suppose it is, because you, if you, if you're taking it over, you want to do it properly.
Right.
If we take it over, we've got to do it properly.
I'm not, I'm not being funny, guys, but at the end of the day, once again, the questions are quite straightforward here, it's, you've got the document here, which covers the level of maintenance, what we're meant to be talking about. We're not talking about whether we're going to get money for people that are being buried there, we're not talking about rabbits coming off the trains, lives or anything like that, we're talking about the level of maintenance, because that's what it's about, and that's why this document's quite detailed. We've got it from, from Rutland County Council, because this is the one, if we do go out to tender, this is what we should use. Do we want to change anything on that document? Do we want to have more litter picks? Do you want to have, I don't know, twenty foot graves? Alf?
I propose that we stay with the same level of maintenance, but again, we get a schedule of rates for any additional work.
Okay, brilliant. So that's the proposal, seconded by Michael. All those in favour? Uh, who's abstaining? Two against, or you?
Against.
Right, Joyce is against, and Michael's abstaining.
Probably because of the vermin.
Well, I think the vermin needs to come under a separate thing, because vermin can, yeah.
You can't say yes to this, when it's not included in.
Don't just say, the, the control of vermin is something separate, outside this job. This is just a standard really maintenance.
Yeah.
Chair, be the.
Yeah, okay.
I'm too sure as well.
Right. The next item on this list is how long should the contract be for? Now, Richard has said four years. Alf?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, that's three years, is it? Three and a half years? No, it's five years, isn't it? Five years.
The new council takes over in nineteen, isn't it?
Yes.
And I think he's put in the, in the paper that it'd be really poor of a session if we actually let it run to nineteen nineteen. The new council took over and had to look at this contract, so I, I propose it's a five-year contract.
Okay, well, that's sound reasoning, um.
Four-year contract, so it's twenty twenty.
Yeah. Any, any thoughts on five?
That makes sense.
It does make, yeah.
Is there any?
Perhaps the proposal I have seconded.
Would be five years.
Just one question on that, would we put a caveat, a get-out jail card in that?
If they're rubbish.
Yeah.
If, if they do not perform standard.
That's, you know, five years is a long time if somebody's underperforming.
That's a standard.
This is my standard speech tonight, if you've got a supervising officer, the supervisor has a one-note, it's not being known, and therefore can, um, fine or, or withdraw.
Proposal on the table then, from council dukes?
Seconded.
If the contract is for five years, it's already been seconded by Stan, I think.
Correct.
And vote, all in favour? Are you abstaining?
I have to.
Yeah, so all in favour then, well, Michael's abstaining, but that's carried.
There's one, there's one, there's one, mate.
Um, how tenders to be advertised?
Well, it says.
Yes, it's put locally, but this is going to be a big contract, so it needs to go through the, um.
The, the tender process.
The, a full tender process, which is national tender, whatever it's called, yeah?
I bet you know what that, yes.
You know, it's called a.
I, I know, I know what you're talking about, it is in there somewhere.
It's referred to.
It's on a website where people will go for local councils, local tender contracts.
Proposal is that it's advertised, A, locally, B, nationally as well, and with our, and also our local contractors that do our own grounds maintenance. So it's, it's booted and suited, basically.
Yeah.
And there's this twenty-five thousand pound website thing that you have to go to as well, but it gets over that value. So basically, it's booting braces on the advertising. So that's the proposal, that it's advertised nationally in with the appropriate tender advertising website, proposed by Adam, seconded by Vince. All those in favour? You know us, can, can you? Closing date to be submitted before? January the thirty-first? Would we make it, it would start in April the first for our normal one, wouldn't it? Do you think?
Give it two months, right, I wouldn't bet that.
Give it two months, that's lots of time, isn't it?
More than that.
I would propose thirty-first of January. Anybody want to second that? Yes? Seconded by Michael earlier. All those in favour? You know us. We could have done the twenty-ninth, we'd be celebrating my birthday as well.
Thirty-first of February, yes.
Um. The date of the decision to be made by the council. Now, if we make the, if the tender's coming on the thirty-first of January.
February.
We're looking at the twenty-seventh of February, which is when it's.
Not that late, is it?
I don't know. Making everyone go along with it, you've got to.
Alison's got that date at her fingertips, I'm sure. Second, second, let's see, a month.
Yeah, to the council.
Ten to February.
When is it?
That's right, ten to February. We can cut that back a week.
Twenty-seven, there is not. Oh, look, there is a one, or February, sorry.
It's not that much.
No, ten.
Ten to February.
Yeah, ten to February, council.
So we could have an extra meeting, couldn't we?
Why not just say to add a February council meeting?
Yeah, or.
Yeah, February, yes, yeah.
Or the tenth. Yeah, or the tenth.
Put it, just put down the, uh, February council meeting because we, we could always convert the planning parts to full council, wouldn't we? Any other matters to be agreed? Um, I think we should look into, I think we should look.
Get over it.
I'm sorry, yeah, sorry, right. It was proposed by, by Alf that it would be the February meeting, seconded by Stan. All those in favour? You know us, well done for keeping track, Alison. I was getting excited about Joyce's vermin. I think any of the matters arising, I think that the council should consider looking into some kind of vermin control. Any comments on that?
Shot gun.
I personally think that we should go along with what Alf is saying about any of the matters should include a supervisory manager type person.
It should come back at a later meeting then?
Yeah.
Okay. Any of the matters will be, a proposal is that at a future council meeting, this is, because there's no point in having a discussion if we don't adopt the cemetery in December. So at a future council meeting, the council will look into.
Supervisor.
Supervisor.
Supervising officer.
Supervising officer and vermin control. Because there isn't any vermin control.
We also, I must suggest that to go over this contract, you need a schedule of rates as well.
And.
For additional work.
Yes, and schedule of rates would be discussed and that would be brought forward to a future council meeting. So that's a proposal then by, um, Adam, seconded by Stan. All those in favour? You know us. Floral displays. This, this should be straightforward, but I don't feel that it will be. Martin. Yes, Martin, yes.
Um, I am sort of puzzled why we're being asked to quote or get a tender for things which are based on probably the tender that went out five years ago. Um, some members may not be aware that over the years, certain retailers, organisations have said they don't want the hanging basket and there is waste. There were businesses that had too many this year and I did point in the direction of Oakham Bloom that they might like to come to the council with some alternatives. Because this year we paid an extortionate amount of money and Market Street didn't have any baskets. There was one in the marketplace. There were huge gaps in the high street. There's a lovely scene in, um, because I think Joyce, if I'm right, put it in the paper, in, um, Mill Street. But they got fed up with half of it and had it taken away because they were too big. I think this whole thing needs to be looked at again because we, we, uh, the situation where we had no contract for the watering, but we paid for it. Obviously, um, to me, I get called an idiot, but when you look at the watering contract, it only needs to be watered once a week. But it costs us three times what it costs three years ago when they were watered practically every day of the week by a local company. So I think this should be deferred for some perhaps group, whether it's with Oakham and Bloom representative, to go out again and decide what is required. Because we have a situation where a number of shops are now using our bracket, I say ours as a town council, because they don't want our baskets. And to me, this tender document, it, it doesn't give the true picture of what, what the situation is. I'm not saying we shouldn't have them, but we need to do a complete review because like the dry cleaner said to me, where's my basket? Well, because one trader didn't want it in Market Street, no one got them.
Okay.
But we paid for them. That's the point to get across is we're paying for things we're not getting.
Michael.
I propose that the group who, uh, responsible for the Christmas lights should take on the role of thoroughly relooking at floral displays.
Please have the elections back here.
Proposal.
Right, that's a proposal by Mike. Don't laugh, you lot, that's it.
Yeah, not doing that.
Right, um, so I think Martin's made a point that it should also be reviewed. Michael has made a proposal that it should be looked at by maybe a different group within the.
No, that's not what he said.
He said you.
It's interesting. People have looked at the lights to be, um, is the Promotions Publicity Working Group, isn't it?
Yes, it's all merged.
Hanging baskets to bring people into the town, aren't they, to look at them?
Yeah, absolutely.
Joyce, you want to say something?
I'll second that motion.
I'm gonna, we haven't a kind yet because I'm coming to Joyce with a bit of sense. Thank you. Over to councillor Lucas.
Uh, hanging baskets really should be, I'm sorry, watered twice a day. It's, it's, I think it's up to the.
Shops.
The shops to water. Uh, the other thing, the, the two things. They stopped watering and it took us a fortnight or three weeks to take the baskets down, by which time they were dead. They should be taken down a minute the contract for watering has finished because one or two shops actually did water and kept them going. But they look dreadful and can we, uh, I don't know how this is going to work, but can I suggest? That we should, the brackets belong to Oakham Town Council, we put them up, but a lot of them are defunct. You've only got to look at Calico. So why don't we take the whole, the brackets down that are not being used? Because I'm sure the judges for Oakham and Bloom noticed the empty brackets. There's loads of empty brackets about the town and they really need to come down. I know we're talking about tenders and tenders, but it's, it's observations.
I think Michael has summarized what you said there, but I should say that the whole thing should be reviewed.
Yes.
Okay, there's a proposal, preposterous, po, po, what is it? Preposterous, good, yes. Proposal on the table.
Muorial.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, councillor Elliot has proposed that, uh, the contract is reviewed by the Promotions Publicity Working Group. Does anybody want to second that?
Can I add in conjunction with Oakham and Bloom, please?
In conjunction with Oakham and Bloom, seconded by councillor Lucas.
And Monley and the ref for Oakham and Bloom.
All those in favour? Are you in favour on that?
Yes, I'll second it.
You've not put your hand up.
I understand, I'm putting my hands.
You've not put your hand up. Yes, yeah, I'm totally with it, yeah. It's, uh, yeah, it's unanimous, all right? You know us. So there's nothing more to discuss on that, is there? Thanks. Nervously, yeah, nervously. Right, well done, green flag. Hopefully everybody's read Alison's report, which is on email.
No.
No, right, okay. Alison's done a, a very comprehensive green flag report. It's in its, it's still in its development, I think.
Yeah, anybody's got any?
Anybody got any comments?
They can email.
Email. Any, any comments now?
It won't get submitted to January.
Unfortunately, I'm not receiving any emails from the council, so I think we'll see that.
I don't know, do you want a hard copy?
Do you want a hard copy?
Yes, please.
Would you like a hard copy though? Can you do a hard copy for Joyce and one for Michael Hayley, please? Any other comments? Okay.
Sorry to say that, actually, if one of the others emails it to me, I don't get the hard copy, but anybody else can email it to me. It's just the council's emails like this.
How?
Ooh. Do you want to, oh, no, no, Bart, can you email Martin?
There's, um, a link on the website.
There's a link on the website?
So I'll, I'll.
No.
Has it gone?
I'll forward it, I'll forward it.
That's, no, that's an old one, Martin.
Oh, sorry.
Can you just get a hard copy done for Michael?
Yeah, that was probably the one we did five years ago.
I'll try and email it to Michael later. If we all try and then you might get a copy.
And there were twenty copies.
I don't know, it should be on there.
Okay, right, so.
I didn't look at it, I saw the link.
We don't need to vote on that, we just.
Did any, did anybody read it?
I read it. I, I noticed that all, I noticed that all the green signs have been repaired as well, haven't they?
I, I did make a comment about that. That was my own comment, but, but the history part is very interesting for anybody who doesn't know the history of how the council came to get hold of Cuts Close, it's on there.
Let's not go through it now, please.
Don't just ask, something, I've got some others. Do we have a board there, um, describing the history of?
I thought. No, no, no.
Well, now is something nice to have.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, there was one there, but.
Yeah, oh, it was, yeah.
Is this, is this something?
I play time sometimes.
Is this something that Joyce and Michael are going to the Castle Project?
Yeah.
Do you want to mention that? See if the Castle Project are going to be doing a board?
Interpretive board, why in Cuts Close?
Well, why not? Because it's going to be an access through Cuts Close, isn't it?
When you think about it, it's, it's the prime arc, you know, and there's nothing there to say. I, I think there's something there besides Cuts Close.
Yes, we used to bring them to.
Yeah, but you want something there, because people are going to look at it and say what, what it's all about.
Okay, I would, I would say, because, because we're noting comments on this, is that that should be, I think, uh, an action that maybe Michael, Michael's already making notes anyway. That when you have your meeting saying, are Rutland County Council planning on having a board? If not, report back to Alison and then it can come up as an agenda option later on that maybe we should have one, okay?
Mm-hmm.
But I don't, we don't need to vote on that because that can be classed as a, Michael's going to carry that forward to a note. Brilliant.
The cap on. It's always better.
I'll lift the cap off, slide it off from the confusion. I'll put your other camera.
Well, I can't see from here.
That way, that way.
Normally it's open. It's very dirty.
So I was just getting warmed up.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, yeah, what it is, we've noted it, and anybody who's got any comments, I'm going to email you directly. Michael is going to carry forward the questions to the meetings then.
Come over this way.
Enjoy the guy.
Comes this way.
Okay. Alison's got your card. Alison's got it. Your leg just fell off. Sorry, my chair.
I think that's too tight now. Why is it wonky now?
There's something behind the plug.
Oh, yeah.
That might be.
Can you handle that? I like the plug.
Oh, it's, it's got a dodgy leaf, you know, all the money you spend on more.
That's what we used last time.
You only said hold that all night. If you can hold it in your teeth.
Yeah. You'd love that, wouldn't you?
That's better, isn't it, eh? Look, that's much better.
That's fixed a bit.
That's a bad.
Why is it all wonky now?
Right, come on.
Right.
I know, the whole thing is just naturally wonky.
Yeah, can you?
It's all right, go on, we can.
It's not normally like that.
Right, thank you. Planning applications to consider the following applicants, uh, McCarthy. This is the elderly people's living thing.
That one's mine.
That's nice, isn't it? If you want, you, some of the members want to pick theirs now, then I've already bought them.
Not on the price, I quote you.
I didn't say.
I just, I thought I was looking for the bear.
Too much hilarity.
Sorry, yeah. Yeah, come on, because it's, it's quarter nine and the prence is on at nine.
No, we've got two, these text to turn to.
Okay, anybody got any sensible comments to make about this? Anybody got any objections? I had, I had, I had to have some concerns raised to me about the amount of surface water. Because there'd been an issue with the Catmas Campus when it was done and the allotment on Kilburn, not Kilburn Road, on, uh, Land's End Way were getting flooded. However, having looked at these detailed plans, the first thing that's noticed is that the foul and, and surface water, the storm water, comes down to the Barleythorpe Road and comes through the, that watering system. The other thing is, is that the hard standings, in other words where the car parks are, is all done with permeable paving. So surface water will soak into the natural, yeah? So these people put a bit, a little bit of thought into it, it's got a green element and there's going to be minimal impact on trees, I believe. Martin?
Well, that's what I was hoping, but for the flood issues, I think they are aware of it. Um, Larkfleet next door have built a great big container.
Yeah.
To, which is a pond, I guess now, so that, I think they are aware of flood issues.
Yeah.
I, I don't object to the need of these boxes for older people in our community. But, um, I do, I do find that the, the development is, um, probably one of the least attractive of what they previously built. I went to the exhibition and I did point that out to them. I think they're trying to unfortunately keep it in keeping with what Larkfleet Horks need of building. And I think that's a bit unfortunate because they do build some very attractive buildings.
Michael?
Well, with one exception, they appear to be planting trees.
Yes.
Then why aren't the developers next door and all over the place not required to do the same thing?
Yeah, yeah, I think because maybe wants to be old people. Um, okay, proposal to, uh, accept that.
Just one observation before we go proposal. Uh, that is obviously in the old Lonsdale position.
Yeah.
You've got Main Road between there and Huntsman's Drive. I would be concerned with elderly members of our community crossing a very busy road with no provision to join their friends over the other side of Vicky Visser. So we need to sort of say, yes, I would adopt full application with provision for a crossing of some description.
Pelican.
Yeah, that's, or an underpass or whatever.
Joyce?
Uh, the other thing is, if they want to walk into town from that side, they've got to negotiate Land's End Way.
It's very dangerous.
Yeah.
And that's a, that's a terrible crossing there.
Okay, Martin?
Uh, the other thing I forgot to mention, uh, was an important thing as well because, um, although they have said theirself in recent communications, it's not in their interest uh, to have a lack of parking spaces, I, I would imagine that these people are going to have visitors and there is exactly one parking space less from the number of dwellings. Can't remember off the top of my head the number, but I, I, sorry.
Forty three.
And there's only forty two parking spaces. Now, there will be staff working there.
Make provision for the staff for one parking.
But then.
Do, there's only one.
There's not enough, there's not enough, despite what they say, I don't believe there's enough parking because people do drive now. Particularly if you live in this area to an older age and I don't think they've made enough provision for parking there.
So, um, Joyce?
Uh, it's just that, uh, you and I have had this conversation and they've actually got a, a trolley, uh.
Buggy park.
Buggy park, which I think is quite nice, but we still can't get across those two junctions.
Yes, I think that's.
So.
We can include crossing.
So proposal is that we are in favour of it, that we believe there should be a pelican crossing because of the.
Barleythorpe Road to Huntsman's Drive.
Two, uh, two pelican crossings.
Crossing Land's End Way.
Provision of two pedestrian crossings, preferably pelican type now. Not just a, it's never up.
Okay. I'll second the application. That's proposed by Vince, seconded by Stan. All those in favour? You know us, well done. Uh, Hawkesme proposed hotel and associated work. Now, this hotel, this is only an outline planning application. I think it's important what, uh, what Paul, Mr Beach Ray, Paul Beach raised, he did raise some points which I wasn't aware of. Uh, even though I'd read their application, I didn't know that they were referring to stuff going back to the early days. I didn't pick up on that. Um, and then they were looking at national specifics and there are eighty three establishments in Rutland, there are one thousand two hundred and eighty bed spaces. Alf?
We're looking at this on a planning condition, not on a commercial basis. If the hotel chain wants to build a hotel.
Yes.
And if, and it fails, that's the hotel's problem. What we're concerned about is the planning considerations surrounding it.
But what we have to be aware of, I totally agree, but of course if it does fail, we don't want a direct hotel there.
I doubt we would have.
Land, Lonsdale House, like.
Yeah. Anyway, so.
We can't, we can't talk that far forward, it's a safe and fair.
Yeah, that's true, that's a good point, yes.
Convert it to our medical practice.
So, we'll bet. Anyway, um, any proposals then? Anybody got any? All right, I'll come to Martin first, Alf.
I, I think it's actually a good addition to, um, to Oakham because it's affordable. It will also employ more people than most of the other establishments. Um, try not to make it personal. I had some friends who stayed in an establishment in Oakham, we had to pay a hundred and forty pounds each. And the standard wasn't good. If they had a budget place to stay, they would have stayed at the budget place.
Okay.
And I think it's, you've got to give the balance. We don't have a budget and I see this as an employment place and a need, especially for bird fare.
Is there a proposal then on the table from Alf?
I suppose, yeah.
Will we accept it?
Acceptance.
And seconded by Stan, always in favour? Michael, you in favour? Yes, so that's only one, one against.
Oh, sorry, you. Oh, you.
Yeah.
The council's voted for it.
I have my reasons.
I'm sure, I'm sure you must have.
I think I'm entitled to your reason.
That's what it is. Partial Carlton Street trading, this is the Merry Monk. This is interesting.
It is.
I, there, there, there's been a lot of outcry from the Merry Monk about antisocial behaviour. And yet nobody seems to have really said anything about it in the local residences. No real residents come forward and said no on this, within that area. There might be a perception that maybe a hotel will calm things down a bit and it will be less A S B. Okay, Martin?
The only concern I had on it is that it is in a historic area in Oakham. And I did find it amusing that they said that the buildings at the back were slightly uneven and higgledy piggledy, well, that's what you get with old buildings. But my major concern did actually relate to the residents and it surprised me that perhaps they don't know about this application.
They won't be contacted.
Because the beer garden has been shoved up to the top, which obviously people smoke, people are going to come out from the bars. And I can see that the fact that they decided they're going to build on the left, if you're looking from the rear of the property, and the beer garden in the top right hand corner, right next to what is really the start of residents' homes. Why couldn't they have done it mirror image to contain the noise, the beer garden down behind some buildings or something? That was just my concern.
Thank you, Vince.
Um, I've got a couple of concerns. One is parking. Um, I'm assuming they're going to be used in the car park at the end of Church Street.
Yeah.
Second is the offloading and loading of linen, et cetera, et cetera, to do with the commercial turnover of that Church Street being as narrow as it is. Um, it causes a, yet another blockage within the town. Um, and I think it's one of the things that we overlook when we say, yes, that's going to be a good idea, that would bring lots of people into the town. Um, and that's it.
Stan, there's twelve bedrooms.
I'm twelve.
Twelve, right.
Uh, I, I spoke to the, um, council and officer. Uh, I, I wanted to see a street, a street sign plan because I wanted to see how it blended in. No such thing, they haven't got them. And I mentioned about parking and he said when, uh, when a property like this with, with a hotel is in the centre of, of like a town, um, we used of the local car park and referred to the car park on Church Street. And that's what they would be using.
Most people that stay there at night, they, I mean, most of us that stayed in hotels, you get there at six o'clock in the evening or after six, and you're told, you can park there, but you've got to be out by eight in the morning, otherwise, you know, the ticket man will be here. And that's a very common practice these days, so I don't, it's not unreasonable.
Is there front delusion on that?
No, definitely not. I, I think one thing I don't worry, it didn't look like the front had actually really changed that much and I don't think they can because it's conservation area.
It must be, that's why I wanted to.
Were you in the session with us?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I accept what you're saying about that, however, look at the high street.
Oh, there is one, you're right, there is.
Well, I'm just going, I'm going to come to Martin, I'm going to come to Martin. Martin?
There's no change externally on the front. It's unfortunately all at the back. But inside, we're down to one little bar and they've already destroyed what some people who like pubs, it's completely stripped and lost. Um, but outside the, the front is not going to be changed at all.
Okay, uh, Michael, Mr Elliot, first, we're not confused, anything there?
This is a, a bit off all, but does anybody know anything about the odd house and what might be proposed there?
No.
No, it might be a hotel, well, the odd house. Well, it's not doing anything else very well, is it?
It's not, not what we're talking about.
No, I know, uh, if only, is it a good thing to have this in the centre of the town for the reasons you've all been saying?
Hmm.
That's a bit further.
Michael Hayley?
I, I share Vince's concern about traffic management.
Yeah. Okay, so we've heard lots of comments. Have we got any proposals? Alf?
I propose acceptance.
Proposed acceptance, seconded by Stan. Proposed acceptance, seconded by Stan, all those in favour? One, two, I'm in favour. Three. Three, all those against, one, one, two, three, four, five.
Need reasons.
If it had a caveat, I'm going to say.
What's the reasons for abstaining?
Absolutely.
We're voting against. Yeah, reasons for voting against.
What's the reasons for voting against?
They can't.
Well, you. I think it's important because it's, it is a.
The reasons of the street.
What are the reasons for voting against?
You need some reasons for voting against.
The reason for voting against is purely because I believe the impact that this will have on the local traffic management would be yet again a unacceptable state, yes.
No, no, it's, no, it's, we agreed to accept it, we voted three, four and five against.
So you don't need to give a reason because you, you voted to accept it, you're not refusing it.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, if, if we are, we're through, we are refusing.
But you're not, you've said you're going to accept it.
We voted to accept.
No.
You voted to accept, Stan said second, we've, we've said, yes.
Councillor.
We shall have.
Therefore, the councillor's voted against it.
Yeah, so it fell.
So what, so the reasons are that it's, so it's falling.
So it's falling, so now you want to have the reasons.
Yeah, and then we're putting the reasons that.
Due to.
Down to some traffic management issues, although I will say that this will come back because when they had a pub there, the brewery that delivered beer would have had the exact same issues as the delivery, Martin.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the, the, the deliveries into Dean Street, they used to just reverse to the Green Gates and then come out. But the reason I object to it is because it's in the conservation area and it's an old building, even the parts on the back. It's a bit of a maze and higgledy piggledy, but I don't like the disruption.
Well, we naturally, I don't, and that's not a bad reason, thank you, Alison's got that down, because in that fact, when we refused the Merry Monk to have adjustments done, what, about a year ago? Because they wanted to extend that back, we refused because of conservation area impact.
Yeah.
So.
And that was supported by residents.
So, traffic management issues, linen deliveries in conservation areas.
Yes.
In the council.
And I believe, would you use the terminology by making it a hotel at the back even being in keeping with the rest of the building too?
Yeah, I think it's.
In keeping, Dean's old.
It's not in keeping.
Very good, in keeping.
Very good.
Okay.
It's not the fire space.
So being no other business, it's now four minutes to nine, so the meeting is finished, thank you very much. I hope everyone is going to be down.